Oh yeah. He's sitting in the crowd tonight.
You have to sit there, because we want to keep an eye on you. Alright, folks, we're gonna get started in a few minutes, I'm gonna give people just a little bit of time to come in. I will remind you that there is a sign-in sheet out front, if you need it. Please do sign in, we'll try to take some notes on who was available online as well. We actually have a pretty healthy turnout online. I'm gonna try to monitor the chat as best I can. I can't promise we'll get everything there put through, but we're gonna make an effort. And we'll just get started in just a couple minutes, so when I start talking again, please just quiet down and we'll get going. That's a question for Bill, but should I speak louder? The mic's on. Alright, I'll check with Bill, thank you for that. How's that, Bill, is that coming, coming through?
Brian, what's up? Brian Keiser.
Yeah, I know, he said he was gonna try to make it, but maybe he's online. Anything, Bill, better? Okay, yeah, okay, alright.
If it works, that's okay, we've done it twice already, so it's alright.
I think we'll pick it up.
I'll stand up in two, I'll stand up.
Whenever you're ready. Yeah, I think we're ready, so I'll just do a quick introduction.
That works, that works.
Okay, folks. Thank you very much, thank you all for coming, this is a great turnout, this is probably as good or better than what we've had in the past. This is our third public hearing on the Church Road sidewalk. A couple of quick comments, if you haven't signed the sign-in sheet out front, please do so now or on your way out. We do want to keep track of that as far as our public participation. This is a federally funded project, so we have a lot of little requirements that we have to follow as far as our process. But also, we want to make sure that we're engaging, you know, people that represent a broad part of the town. So, I see folks here from Church Road, I see folks here from other parts of town, so it's really good to see that. You all should have received some kind of notice in the mail, in the paper, on email. We did make a concerted effort to try to make sure that everybody had a notice about this event. I'll just say very quickly that this has been ongoing, this this project and this idea for several years. It was actually one of the first things that was brought to my attention when I started this town manager about eight years ago. When we went through and talked about how to proceed, we applied for a grant. It took us three years to actually get the grant for the Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Program that moves federal dollars through the main Department of Transportation. And right now, we're looking at an eighty-twenty match, so eighty percent of the project cost being covered by the federal government, twenty percent being covered by the town of Reedfield. And we do have some funds available to cover our match indirectly, ARCA funds. But more directly, we've been saving over the past several years to prepare for what we knew would be inevitable project cost. So, we have partnered with Goel Palmer Engineering Firm, and we have Travis Landry here from Goel Palmer, also Don Edinger. I think Don's just here to keep an eye on things, but Travis is gonna be doing the heavy lifting for us as far as explaining the project. And I just want to say thanks and welcome Travis, and I'll let you go for it.
Thank you, I see some familiar faces, so hello again to the ones that have been to one of our former public meetings. And welcome to anybody who's joining us for the first time tonight. If you've attended one of the previous meetings, sorry Travis, could you use that microphone? Absolutely, it'll come out of the holder. So if you've attended one of our previous meetings, this is gonna be a very similar format to what we've done in the past. But I will give a quick rundown of what we're gonna do. We're just going to start by presenting the design. As it currently stands, I'm gonna run through some of the requirements that we have to follow. I'm gonna talk about where we currently are, and I'm also gonna address some of the comments that we've received in our two, our first two meetings. So, so I guess I'll get started. I will ask if anybody has questions, to just please hold them till the end. The presentation probably won't take too long, so you won't have to wait that long, but I do ask that you hold them, just so we can, we can work through it. So this is for the Reedfield Church Road Sidewalk Project. The win number for Main DOT is two-five-one-one-three for this project. So, the project starts at Main Street and extends up Church Road, and it ends at the fairgrounds entrance. So, I believe the length is about a third of a mile. So a quick overview, Eric, if you have a chance.
Yeah.
Looks like you're doing it right there.
Right there, yeah, should be, takes a split second.
Eric's gonna pull up our graphics, these graphics that you see up here are the same graphic that's on the wall. So if you're having a hard time seeing anything, and will want to take a closer look at it at the end of the meeting, please feel free to go up and take a look at the graphics up there. But just a quick overview of some of these graphics. We have our proposed work for the project shown in the road and in the sidewalk area. Proposed roadway work and work that's gonna take place in the shoulders of the road is shown in a darker yellow color. So if you can see my green laser right there, I'm pointing at the darker yellow color, that's where it's gonna be in the road. Grading limits for the project, so areas that we will be grading out lawns and kind of making our work blend into the existing condition. Those are shown in a lighter green color, which is again right where that laser is in that area there. It's a little hard to see on the screen, it'll be a little bit more pronounced on the printed graphic on the wall. Trees that are shown in the survey information and as part of the project, green trees are trees that are going to remain in the proposed condition. Trees that are red are trees that are planned to be removed. The proposed sidewalk, which is the focus of this meeting and the project, is shown in a darker gray color. So you can see it runs a little bit along Main Street and down Church Road. Existing sidewalks that are within the project limits and within the area are shown in a lighter gray color on these plans. And also, existing buildings are shown in a gray color as well, a lighter gray. Right-of-way and property owner information is shown in black on this plan, it's the dash lines, you can see here on the bottom of the sheet, as well as these vertical lines, those are property lines, and you have property owner names also shown. There's some other text on these plans that's kind of mixed in, so sometimes the property owner names can be hard to find, but they are, they are shown. So with that, I'm gonna get into some of the previous design comments and considerations that we received through email and through our first two public meetings. I'm just gonna run through these pretty quickly, some of them are gonna be redundant from the first, and some of them are a little bit newer, that came from our second meeting. But as part of developing the design that we're presenting tonight, we did take a look at several different options. Those included a sidewalk that is only on the western side of Church Road, a sidewalk that is only on the eastern side of Church Road. And then, what we landed on was a mixture of the two, with a crosswalk about a little bit further than the midpoint of the project. We looked at incorporating esplanades and no esplanades, and esplanade is a little grass area between the road curb and the sidewalk, so just to give a little bit of a separation or a buffer from traffic to the pedestrians. So we looked at implementing an esplanade and no esplanade, and again, we've landed on kind of a mixture of the two, where you'll see some areas where we have a short, small esplanade, and then other areas where the sidewalk is directly adjacent to the curb line. We took a look at impacts to large mature trees that are along this road, I know there are several quite large and very nice trees. So we took a look at aiming to maintain and kind of leave as many of those alone as we could. We do have a few tree removals, but for the most part, the large mature ones were able to stay. We took a look at impacts to buildings and existing foundations and aimed to not change the reveal of any foundations, because I know there are a lot of older buildings within the project limits, and we looked to make sure that we weren't impacting those buildings with our project and our proposed work. One other comment that's come up in the past was connection of foundation drains to the proposed design. So with the work that we're doing, and I'll talk about it in a little more detail in a few minutes, we are proposing a closed drainage system for some portion of the project, well, for most of the project, but not in all areas. But anywhere where that closed system will meet a foundation drain that currently drains into the ditch, we are proposing that that is gonna be tied into the existing, or I'm sorry, the proposed drainage system. And as many of those locations that we are aware of, we have noted on the plans, if you are a property owner here tonight and you notice any that, or you notice your property has one but doesn't have it noted, please let us know, we don't always know about where they are. But we do want to make sure that we're calling out everyone that is supposed to have one and get those on the plan. We also talked about in our first couple meetings, the location of the crosswalk that we have. So, the destination for this sidewalk right now is the Reedfield Fairgrounds. And as I think everybody may know, or if you've been through the area, that is on the eastern side of the road. We, as I mentioned, looked at putting the sidewalk on the western side of the road as well as the eastern side. And through just the design development process and gathering feedback from the public, we landed on this split design where we have sidewalk on both sides of the road in different areas. So we did look at that crosswalk, and we looked at, you know, an optimal location, is it, you know, closer to the fairgrounds, farther from the fairgrounds? And ultimately, we landed on where it's currently shown, and I'll speak to that a little bit more as we go down through this meeting. One of, some of the more major comments that we received through our first two public meetings is, one of them is on-street parking, so this was not something that we really had thought about in our, you know, as we first started up with the project. It was a comment that came from the public and from engagement with you all, so that was something you'll see on these plans, I'll speak to it a little bit more. Impacts to the water main that's in the area, so that was, that was an item that we were asked to avoid. And as we have a little bit more drainage design development to go through, but as it's currently shown, our drainage design does a very good job of avoiding direct impacts to the water main, and I'll talk, again, I'll talk a little bit more about some of these things as I go through my presentation. Probably our second largest item or comment that came from our first couple public meetings was hearing about high speeds and traffic, and looking to implement traffic calming measures throughout the project to help slow traffic down and create a more aware driver, so those, so what we did to implement that was we proposed three raised speed tables, and one of them is at the crosswalk location, so it's a raised crosswalk. So, we do have some of those, there were three, just in an effort to slow traffic in both directions approaching the crosswalk, we have proposed three of those. We also took a look at existing entrances and maintaining existing use of entrances. That was an item that came up in one of our first couple public meetings. We looked at, or we have not looked at, I apologize, we have not looked at drainage sizing yet. We have done a plan view, so looking down from above layout of the drainage system. As part of our next step is going to be actually calculating what we call drainage areas and figuring out flow to each point, so we can actually size pipes and determine invert elevations and things like that. So, but that was a concern, and that design will be completed in accordance with Main DOT standards. So we'll follow their typical design practices for that item. Lighting improvements was another item that's come up in the past, and we have begun to address. We are waiting for a little bit more information from Main DOT. We've heard of a new policy coming down the pipeline, and in an effort to make sure we, we don't propose a bunch of stuff and then have to change it all, we are waiting a little bit, but we do have some of the lighting noted on these plans. You'll see some notes about installing lights on utility poles and things like that to help provide some illumination of the sidewalk. And then the last one I'd like to note was, I'm not sure if you're here, but Mr. Hayes noted about sand depositing in the driveway, some flow that comes across in the winter and spring months, and even in the summer months, I'm sure, sand deposits in the driveway. That is an item we're gonna look at in a lot more detail as we develop the drainage design further in our next phase of the project. So, and through that, we'll look at some options and have some discussions with Eric in the town, just to see what, you know, what are our options at that location. So that's kind of a quick overview, I'm sure I didn't catch all of the comments and concerns that we've raised in the past. Um, so that's kind of a quick overview. I know I'm sure I didn't catch all of the comments and and concerns that we've raised in the past. Or that have been raised in the past. Um, and and there are. Like I said, I'm sure there's a bunch I I didn't mention, but those are kind of the hot button items that I wanted to run through at the beginning, just to make sure. To make sure that we we brought them out. A lot of them have been incorporated in the design, like I said, where we could. Um, but there are some that. Are we're either just not at that point in the design process yet, um, or we're still working through solutions. So some quick uh roadway characteristics, I'm just gonna I'm just gonna give you before I get into the more technical part of the presentation. Um, Church Road sees about twelve hundred vehicles per day. Uh, it's a corridor priority five roadway, which. Corridor priority is uh a classification that main DOT assigns to roads. It's given a number of one through five. One being the most important corridors like the interstate system, Route One or sections of Route One. And things like that. Um, and five being local town roads. The speed limit for for Church Road is twenty-five miles per hour within the project limits, just past the fairgrounds. My understanding is it it jumps up to thirty-five miles an hour, um, which. Uh, which make tribute to some of the the speed issues, but again, we're proposing the um. The speed tables and and raised crosswalk to help aid the traffic coming through this area. The existing roadway width itself is about twenty-five feet wide, has one travel lane in each direction. That's usually between eleven to twelve feet. And there's uh variable variable width gravel shoulders out there in the existing condition. The western side of the road, as many of you know, has an open ditch uh right now. And overhead utilities are also present and underground on the western side of the road. I believe the water main is located. In uh under the shoulder of the road and and in the further or the later portion of the project. Actually outside of the roadway footprint, um, but on the western side of the road. And the eastern side of the road was the side of the road with the majority of the large mature trees. And some of the older properties that are a little bit closer to the road uh than the western side. So as as I've mentioned, uh, this project is constructing a sidewalk along. Paper's being stubborn with me. Uh, along Church Road. The sidewalk has been proposed on the western side of the road. Uh, starting at Main Street and going up to, I believe, I don't recall the property owner's name. Uh, the Morrow Property. So right about the Morrow Property, just before their driveway is where our crosswalk, our raised crosswalk is located. And then at that point, the cro- the the sidewalk shifts to the eastern side of the road and continues on to the fairgrounds. Uh, this raised crosswalk area, they're kind of hard to see, but right about there, we have a couple of dots. Those are rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Uh, those are the flashing light systems that when the button is pushed by the pedestrian. They alert drivers that a pedestrian is trying to cross at this location. Um, and as I mentioned, this is a raised crosswalk as well. Sidewalk continues on to the eastern side of the road. And one item you will notice in several locations on both sides of the road. Throughout the project is our on-street parking. So as I mentioned, this was a comment that we received from one of our previous meetings. Um, through this project and and when laying all this out, we were able to provide about twenty-eight. New on-street parking spaces. Um, so that can help, you know, for community events, um, things like that. I know that there was a. A demand that was expressed during our one of our previous meetings. Along Church Road at this time, we have concrete slip form curb that's proposed. We do have a few areas of botuminous curb. On the project, but those are on Main Street where we're matching into some of the existing curb that's already out there. So we would have proposed the same type. Of curb, but this dash line style that you see running along Church Road is curbing. And as I mentioned, we do have some drainage improvements that are shown in blue on this graphic and those are. Those consist of an underdrain system that carries the water along the road as well as surface inlets and catch basins. That will collect surface drainage and things like that. Um, so this is actually a good spot right here. I can kind of speak to some of the design elements and then. And we can kind of talk through some of those as well. So as you can see here, we have this gray area, as I mentioned, that is our sidewalk. Everywhere you see a break in that is where there's an existing driveway um that we are. They're going to be doing some work at grading, rebuilding, um, and helping to meet ADA grades through the side, through the the driveway. On-street parking here. So this sidewalk is typically five and a half feet wide. Um, there are a few areas where it's a little bit wider and I can talk to to why it is wider in those areas, but. For the most part, along Church Road, the sidewalk is planned to be five and a half feet wide. We do have a couple of locations where. The sidewalk bumps out and it is a little hard to see because it's a gray on gray type of thing for a utility pole. But right here, we have a note install lighting on existing utility pole. That's actually pointing to a utility pole that sits right about there. And at this location, you can see the sidewalk is a touch wider than it is in the other areas. And that's just to provide enough width for for two reasons. The first being ADA passage and providing enough clear width for um for those requirements as well as the town's sidewalk plow. It being able to get the sidewalk plow through. So that way this can be maintained in the wintertime. Um, so you'll see a few areas where where that is uh that little bit of extra width is provided. Also here, you can see we have two parallel parking stalls, uh, on-street parking. And on either side of these, uh, or you can see the curb bumps in on either side of these parking stalls. What that does is that creates a dedicated parking bay for for the pa- parked traffic. It creates a very. Specific area without having the entire corridor be widened out. Uh, and the reason you see some of these indents is we have what are called curb bump outs that are that are kind of placed throughout the project. Um, in strategic locations to help accommodate things like driveways. They help accommodate things like mailboxes and. They also help accommodate areas where there may be an existing utility pole that if the curb line were to stay. At the offset shown here, we would not be able to provide the width necessary for ADA and the sidewalk plow. So they they serve kind of three functions. Um. And I can speak to that a little bit more during the question and answer session. I'd be happy to go through um some of those in in greater detail. Uh, but as we go through the project, you'll see a few areas where we have these blue rectangles. Like I mentioned, those are drainage catch basins. Those will collect the drainage, put it into our underdrain and pipe system that we're proposing as part of the project, the closed drainage system. Uh, so those are in several locations. Most of the time located in those parking bays, just because any drainage that does come down this road could get trapped in those. So we propose them in those parking days to help collect the surface water that ends up in that area. You'll also see some located here where there is no parking. Um, that is. To help us collect drainage that falls on the backside of the sidewalk where we're not able to get that to the curb line. So that is collected on the backside through another catch basin and then brought into our closed drainage system from there. And we have a very similar situation going on right here. Uh, so as I mentioned, at this time, we haven't done pipe sizing. So you'll see through these plans, we have. This note right here, twelve inch underdrain. As it stands, they're all twelve inch pipes shown on this plan. But as we progress the design and determine flow and all of those things that go into the drainage design, those pipe sizes could change. Um, I'm not saying they will because it's very possible that they will not. Um, but it also is very also very possible that they will. Uh, so. Eric, if you could scroll down the road a little bit.
Absolutely.
We can talk. That is probably good right about there. We can kind of speak to some of this stuff here. Um, so. So some of these areas you see, like I mentioned, this this green space behind the sidewalk, that's grading limits. A blue line with an F built into it. That is a fill line. So that's an area where. The contractor or the person constructing this project would be more or less filling into the existing condition and just kind of grading material out. And not necessarily removing any material, um, but just blending and making things. Match into the existing condition. You can see that there are some areas and there are some notes on the plans. And this is probably a good spot. This property right here is the Union Meeting House. Um, and this property does have a few large mature trees that we did want to try to avoid impacts to as part of the project. So you will see things like this right here where those the slope line is what we call that that line with the F, that slope line. Jumps in around the tree or it jumps in around the meeting house sign and lamp post here. Um, to help avoid impacts to those features and and um match into the existing condition at the same time. Uh, also other property features that we've tried to be as sensitive as we can to, things like um. This property here adjacent to the meeting house. Uh, I believe there is a livestock fence that's in the area and our goal would be or. The intent of the project uh is that we're going to avoid impacts to the fence or if impacts are not avoidable. Um, there'll be very specific notes on the project plans that instruct the contractor to coordinate with property owners as needed. Um, if say a fence needs to be moved or anything like that. Um. Or for whatever reason, a temporary situation needs to happen. So the the as a property owner, you would be made aware of that prior to a contractor just coming out. Starting work on your in your area and possibly disrupting the fence. Uh, so and as we have right here, this little area, the yellow, that's our first speed table on the project. Uh, as you go, as you're going away from Main Street. Um, so I mentioned those are going, those are, we're implementing those to provide traffic calming and help slow vehicles as they approach the crosswalk. And as they drive through the area. Yeah, scroll a little bit more, be fine. So again, that's go right up to the crosswalk, I think. That's good. Perfect. Thank you. Uh, so again, as I mentioned, we were proposing about twenty-eight new on-street parking stalls uh with the project and those go. More or less up the entire western side of the road from Main Street. I think we missed maybe. Don't have it in a couple of properties at the beginning, um, but the intent is to provide as much on-street parking as we could. We have our raised crosswalk here. With the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, as I mentioned before, we have some more closed drainage. This area will be collecting the short run of ditch flow that's present in the existing condition. And bringing it into this closed drainage system that just crosses the road and follows the existing outlet path. Um, so there's really no change in where the water's flowing with what we're doing. Um, it's just changing how it's going to get there. Uh, as we move toward the fairgrounds, uh, as I mentioned, our crosswalk shifts to the eastern side of the road. We are adjacent to the curb line in this area. So the sidewalk will just be right against the curb, no esplanade, no grass buffer between. Uh, and that was more to just avoid property impacts through this section of the road. As we get down closer to where the fairgrounds is, we have another section of on-street parking. Uh, that kind of brings us to the end of the project. Uh, that area. Is the same layout as the previous sections of on-street parking. Um, with the same idea with our closed drainage system that will collect the water uh that comes through this area. We have our last speed table adjacent to the entrance to the fairgrounds. And then right now we have this. This tie-in here proposed of the 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 path will not connect into the, I'll call it the roadway side of the entrance. It looks. It uh, it will intend to come through the stone wall area and then down and into the parking lot. Um, so that's an overview of the design. Um. Some of the next steps for the project, I'm going to get into real quick. Uh, so I'm almost through my presentation and then we'll get into the question and answer session. Um, so next steps for the project, these plans are at about fifty percent complete. Um, after this meeting, our goal will be to progress the plans to seventy-five percent. We call that PIC or Plan Impacts Complete. Uh, once we hit that milestone, the project will step into the right-of-way process. The right-of-way process. Uh, we will look to define the impacts of the project. That's the PIC plans. We will also look at areas where we will need permanent easements for drainage and sidewalk. Those. Those easements do not expire with time. So if there is a new catch basin going in and a permanent easement is needed. Uh, to maintain that catch basin that. That is a right that does not expire. Um, there are also going to be temporary construction rights that are needed for this project. Uh, those areas, those rights do expire, but it gives the contractor the ability to construct the project, tie things in, grade things out as needed. Um, you'll see some areas like right here where we have driveways that kind of come back. That design is meant to tie the driveway in, um, but that does get into private property in some areas. So that that temporary construction right would cover those situations. Uh, also part of that process. Uh, appraisals will be completed. That will uh will take a look at all of these impacts. Um. Offers will be made, uh, that will offer just compensation for the impacts. Now, these are all done through professional appraisers. Negotiations will follow. And then finally, the last step of the process is condemnation on on the rights. And then at that point, the right-of-way process will be just about complete. That entire process takes about twelve months um to complete. So. Uh, so that is one of our more significant uh items that that does go on through the project. Uh, schedule wise, so for the remainder of this year, for the remainder of twenty twenty-four, we'll continue to work on uh design. Um, we will get into the right-of-way process and go from there. At this time, if funding is secured. Uh, we could be looking at a construction date as early as twenty twenty-five, the twenty five twenty-five season. Um, but as we all know, sometimes things take longer, sometimes things go faster. So that date is always moving to some degree. So that pretty much sums up my presentation. Um, and I will open up to. Uh, Q and A. Um, I think uh the intent is to go up to the podium. Eric, is that correct?
Yes, and I'll just, uh, we had a couple um on the the chat already that I wanted to.
Okay, so.
Take a look at.
So if you do go up to the podium, if you could just name, um, and if you live on the project or or name an address, I guess would be. Would be great. So that way we can have a record and um. And keep track of all the comments. Uh, I will say that and just one one quick item before we go to that. Bill, Bill is here. Yes, Bill, I have your email and I have reviewed your comments. I have. I have taken a look at them. So we can talk about some of those tonight. I won't, I won't go through them all, but we can certainly talk about them as. As we go through the Q and A. And feel free to ask them too, if you if you if you'd like. So. I don't want to jump the gun. So though let's uh, do you want to, we can open it up and we'll we'll work through them.
Yeah, I was just gonna jump in.
Yeah, if there is, if there have been comments on the Zoom, on the Zoom line, that's.
Joan had a question about the uh the sidewalk, um, and the the drainage on their property. Um, at twenty-five Church Road. Also, she had a question and a concern about the um, the stone wall being removed, which um, I I think. Isn't the case, but um, uh, there might be some impacts for for access through a small section of it. But it it looks like in large part that's going to remain correct.
So. Right now, the intent is that the stone wall is going to be removed um as you come up to the fairgrounds property. And that is because just in order to build the cross, uh, the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the sidewalk, in order to build that. We're going to be picking the grade up in that area and that wall would essentially be more or less buried by by that increasing grade. Um, between the curb and the slopes that are required for the sidewalk that just picks things up on that backside. I don't know the exact number. Um, but it is, it was enough for us to to note that we would need to remove that stone wall as part of the project.
Okay. Uh, around drainage, the sheet, again, the similar question to Steve, uh, with the drainage coming across the road. The existing condition um results in in water coming on their property.
Yeah. So is this a property, uh, and forgive me, I don't know where exactly it is. Is this a property that is. Adjacent to our sidewalk or maybe on the opposite side of the road? Okay.
Find it back here. We should be a little bit.
Oh, Joan, was that what it was? Okay. Okay. So. Okay, yeah. So right now, we don't have any pro- proposed improvements on that side of the road in that area. Um, similarly, as we look to, as as we assess drainage and where things are flowing and how they're flowing. Um, that is something that, again, similar to the previous property, we can take a look at and and discuss with Eric on on um. On what we think we can do in that area to help make an improvement.
So I guess the bottom line on that would be that the condition won't get worse, but we'll do what we can to make it better.
Right. Yep. Thank you for the question. That was a good question.
So the chat's clear.
Okay, okay. Mr. Drake.
Okay, hi, Bill Drake, I live at thirty-four Church Road. I've been there for over thirty years and I've probably seen everything that ever happened on the road. And I'll bring some of that up today. First comment is the um, speed bumps. They show them terminating at the edge of the uh, roadbed. And yet, uh, my experience. Almost wherever I've seen speed bumps, if there's a way to drive around them, people will. There's no getting around that. And in fact, uh, I wouldn't be surprised to see him coming in the opposite direction. Swerve across the road to go around the speed bump. I think the solution is easy, just extend the speed bump to the right way edge.
Thank you for your.
Yeah, okay.
Comment, uh. So how we currently have him shown on the plan is as, just as you said, they end at the edge of the pavement. Um, edge of the roadway pavement, so they cover the full width of the road. Um, on one side of the road, at, at, at least each of these locations, the, the crosswalk actually has it on both sides. There is curbing present, so if someone were to try to drive around that, they would end up. Either hitting the curb or driving over the curb in the sidewalk area, um, also likely hitting a, a. Pole that holds the RFB, so there, there are features at at least the crosswalk and on one side of. The two uh, raised speed tables.
Okay.
Uh, as far as people driving out around them. Unfortunately, I can't say people won't, I can't say people will. Um, I would like to think that most drivers would follow the. Rules of the road and, and try to stay between the lines, but that's. One of those items that's difficult for us to, to plan for. Um, the behavior of drivers is often a, a very interesting science.
Well, I tell you, there's a lot of drivers on Church Road that don't know the rules or they choose to ignore them, one of the two.
It's a great question.
I think it's alright there.
There will be signs.
Okay, well. Address it, please.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point. Uh, I will know quickly. On that plan and the plan up there, signs are not shown. There are, that is one thing that does get developed later in the design, once we have the. The, the project a little further along, so um, there would be signage approaching all of these speed tables at the speed tables. Um, and throughout the project as needed, uh, so.
Uh, I was glad to see that you uh, added streetlights onto the poles. The power poles that don't have one right now, uh, but that leaves, uh, what's the plan for lighting on the east side?
So as I mentioned, we are still looking at uh, the lighting policies and things are changing, so. Before the end of the project, we, we will have a solution to hopefully providing light, lighting throughout the project. Um, but right now, we haven't, we, we've, we've kind of paused a little bit to look at. Or to wait for that guidance and look at what the department comes out, out with, um, but I certainly understand your concern and, and it's a great comment.
The solution is you have a power pole at the entrance of the fairgrounds, uh, run a conduit, uh, in your. When you dig out for the drainage and. Worry about later, but at least you'll have the ability to wire it.
Yeah, no, that's a great comment, thank you.
Um, cellar drains. Shown on the plan some places. I don't know if mine's shown or not, but if it is.
I think it, I think it may be, I hope it is.
My cellar drain, however, doesn't terminate in the right-of-way. It's on my hillside, it drains to the uh. Ditch, so to speak, um.
So I, I think in your comments, uh, you had noted.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, was it rodents?
Yeah, I, I wonder if there's any barriers or anything for uh, keeping rats from coming up just into my cellar.
Yeah, so I can speak to the detail that the department provides and that we would follow as part of the project. Uh, so the detail that the department provides for a cellar drain connection. Includes a, a pipe coming out of the proposed drainage system. It runs back and there is what's, uh, they call it a cleanout, so a vertical pipe that comes up through the ground. And at that spot, there's a vertical, supposed to be a vertical difference between. The pipe into that cleanout and the pipe out of that cleanout, so there would be a small section of vertical pipe built into that, that. Uh, system. Um, I'll also say, uh, that. Backflow preventers could be installed as part of. Of connecting that cellar drain, however. The department and, and the details that they follow, that ends up on the private property side of the right-of-way. Um, and would be the responsibility of the, the property owner if they want it.
Yeah, I probably will wind up putting a screen in my basement anyway.
That, I think that also would. Would help, yes. It's, it, that is a good comment and a good concern.
The, um, you said the drainage plans haven't really been firmed up and you're going to do a survey of. Rainfall, I guess.
Yeah, so.
This last storm we had before Christmas was, was, I've never seen anything like it. It was amazing. Two inches per hour and the ground's frozen and all that water had nowhere to go. Uh, it dish, backed up in the undergr, the road culvert, uh. Uh, it was like a, a gallon bucket being drained by a straw. Anyway, um. It backed up to the point where my driveway is the continental divide and it overflowed my driveway going on down Church Road. That's. And, um. So I think that, uh, in doing your survey. Um, you need to take into consideration, uh, the ground frozen. Uh, and nothing drains off of that whole hillside except into the di-ditch or the drainage system.
Yeah, so as part of our, as part of the design development for, um, for the drainage pipe sizing, one thing we look at is the watershed areas of. Um, each of those catch basins or pipe inlets, so we'll look at contours, uh. Topographic contours and, and figure out what is the area draining to this point, this particular point. Um, and then we calculate flow and things like that, we size the pipes accordingly. Um, following the, the department's standards that they, that they put. Um, I know. We've had a few comments regarding uh, pipe sizes and, and we've been asked to size conservatively. Um, so we do plan on sizing conservative, conservatively, but also within reason, being mindful of, of cost and things like that. Um, but yes, that is, that is one thing we will be looking at in a lot more detail as we, as we progress the design.
Uh, I. Still don't see the need for the bump outs, but in any case, um. Uh, the other thing is that there, uh, there's no set. Pattern to where they're at or their size or anything else and. At least, uh, I would think that we could come up with some kind of standard approach to it, uh, standard size. I do see. Uh, if it precludes parking right next to a driveway and a car exiting, uh. Gives a little better field of vision for the guy pulling out, uh, onto the street, so. Uh, maybe there is a, a, a need for him. Uh, I just would. But having them not associated with the driveway, I, I, I just don't see that at all.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, there was, there were a handful of factors, um, but the three major ones that we looked at were. Precluding dri, uh, parking in front of driveways.
Yeah.
Um, allowing for a, a good place for a mailbox that lets the mail carriers be able to access the mailbox. Uh, and then the other one was providing adequate sidewalk width in areas where there may be a utility pole or some feature that we can't. Encroach on, I mean, we're trying not to encroach on, um, so, so that, that is, I think there are some that are not associated with the driveway. Um, and that would be, the utility pole would be the main, the main reason behind that one, obviously, because we're not thinking of mailbox.
Anyway, um. Couple other comments that I didn't write up. I didn't see anything on the plans identifying leach fields. Uh, and the last time they dug the ditches, uh, they didn't know where the leach fields were either. Uh, so, um. And a lot of the houses on the west side and the leach fields in the front of the house. Because it drains downhill and so, um.
Yep, so, oh, go ahead.
Are, are, are we going to identify that?
So I, I believe there are s, one or two noted on the plan, however. Um, if you know where yours is and you have a plan of your property or you can do a sketch. That would show us where yours is, um, I would ask that you please do so and have it sent. I'll, I'll have business cards, I'll put them out on the table before, um, before everybody leaves, have either sent to me or sent to Eric. Um, preferably through Eric, so that way he can have record of them as well, um, but you could send it to both of us and. Uh, and then we'd be happy to make sure that we account for them on the plan, but otherwise, we just, there's no way for, for us to know, but if you can send it to us, that would be very.
Can you wait till summer?
We, yeah, so.
The grass grows greener over the leach field and that's the only way I know.
Yeah, so, so as I mentioned, our design schedule, we're looking at through the rest of twenty twenty-four to, to help button up the design and get things moving. And we have, you know, there's more design to be done, so, so it, it, it should last and there should be an opportunity this summer for you to see.
Probably tell you where my neighbors are. But, uh, other than that, I, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, so like I said, I'll leave business cards out and, and if you could send them to Eric and myself, that would be, that would be helpful and we can definitely. Try to account for them on the plans, um, and, and.
Uh, I noticed on the plan, the, uh, height of the yellow flashing light on the crosswalks. A pole is twelve feet. Is that high enough?
Um, I don't, I can't see the detail in my, in my head to, to see the dimensions right now. Um, I know. The bottom of the sign and the, and the lights, they're typically at least seven feet because that's required through. The ADA and, and, um, the ADA design standards, uh, but. The whole unit itself, yes, more than likely does get to about twelve feet. There's a solar panel that gets mounted on the top of that.
Yeah, that goes up twenty-four feet, and so.
So that, and like I said, I can't speak to the exact dimensions, but, but yeah, that, they do get quite tall.
An interesting observation is that when you come up over the rise, uh, to, towards the entrance to the fairgrounds. You can see the red flashing light. Uh, from that far off. And I would think the yellow flashing light ought to be visible at about the same time.
Yeah, so, so one of the criteria we look at when we, when we place a crosswalk, we look at what's called crosswalk sight distance. Um, that walks through actually a lot shorter. What it does is it accounts for how long it takes someone to stop. Once they see something and recognize that they need to stop, um. The, the, the guidelines for looking at that and evaluating it actually is. A three and a half foot, I believe it's three and a half foot tall height of object and a three and a half foot tall height of eye, so. Where you may be coming over the hill in a truck, you might be sitting at six feet tall and that light on the other side is sitting at eighteen feet tall. We're looking at it at a much lower level, which in theory decreases the amount of length that you can see. Um, but it is something that we do look at for crosswalks and, and sight distance and things like that, so. We will be, we will be looking at that, um, as we, as we continue to progress the design.
Is there an estimated cost for the total project yet?
There is, um.
I didn't hear it mentioned.
I.
Yeah, so I'll just answer that, um. So we're looking at about a one point two million dollar estimated cost. Um, with eighty percent of that being covered by, uh, the, um, federal government, the two hundred and forty thousand dollar. Share would be, uh, the town's responsibility. Uh, we do have a hundred ninety thousand dollars, uh, in ARPA funds that we're going to be. Uh, planning to, I guess I can't commit to it, but we're planning to be moving those into, um, the road reserve and then using road reserve funds. To, to, to fill out, um, the remainder of, of that, uh, one ninety. The fifty thousand dollars we currently have in reserve, uh, at the end of this fiscal year after we finish, uh, you know, our, our current phase of work. Uh, makes the two forty that we need to get to that one point two, um, so, um. That does raise another question, um, about the ongoing maintenance costs. We had a question in the chat about. Uh, what the ongoing maintenance cost of this would be. Uh, we do already have an existing sidewalk, uh, that's about a mile. Existing staff that, that, that do that, um, we expect that we would, um, it'd take about an extra hour, uh, for the staff to. Um, to do this, uh, maintenance on this road, um, and then you have that incremental, uh, you know, one-third of, 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 of a mile. Uh, as far as travel time, wear and tear, all of that on the equipment, so, um, that's not a very exact, um, uh, but. Uh, what I would say is it's, uh, it's incremental, uh, to, to cost that we've already, uh, we already have incurred, so, um. That was the cost piece. There was also a note in the comments about, um, the, the sidewalk affecting that, that stone wall. Um, and, and yeah, that, that's a concern, um, I hadn't realized it was going to be removed completely, uh, but I will say that, you know, it is just in that one section. And there is a chance that if we're able to work with the property owner at that location, we may be able to, to kind of, uh, bump that, that. Walking, uh, piece, the actual sidewalk, um, a, a little bit, um, different direction so that we don't have the same impact. Uh, on the stone wall, but that's something we can look at, um, uh, and, uh, you know, I do understand that. Uh, but I will say there are other, plenty of other locations on that road where, uh, there have been sections of stone wall that are a hundred feet that have been removed. Um, not saying it's my first choice, but I think it's something that we can look at, um, and I understand why that was brought up as a concern, so. I'll give that back to you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Marviny, I live at Broadview Heights, so not on Church Road, but I drive to Church Road probably every day. Um, I'm glad to hear your discussion about managing water and the size of the pipes. And I encourage you not to just look at thirty years of past water, you know, uh. Water, uh, rainfall on, on this area of Maine, but to look at projections going forward because. You know, the last time I was here, I could point back a few months and say, hey, we had a hundred-year rainstorm. Now I can stand here again and say, two months ago, we had a hundred-year plus rainstorm, so we got to be looking forward rather than. Just looking thirty years back. The other question is on the lighting, is the intent to use the. Um, standards for lighting that help preserve, uh, the night sky. Um, I, part of the reason I came to Reed Field was because it, it had few lights and, uh. You know, you can see, still see the Milky Way at night. And the standards are pretty simple, it's the brightness of the lights and I don't remember what particular that is and then shielding that ensures that. All the light goes down, that it doesn't, that the bulb is above the horizontal. Base, the bottom of the shielding and that's really what it takes, those two things, so I hope. That will be part of what's considered for new lighting.
Yeah, yep, yep, we will definitely include that when we, when we take a closer look at the lighting and all that stuff, so, yep, thank you for your comment.
There was another question in the chat about, um, the east side drainage, um, so I think that, um, the, the idea that, um. And you can talk about it more, but that, um. The existing drainage isn't going to change on that side of the road, uh, we may try to improve it if we can, but. This project will not add any water to that side of the road, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, so, so with our current drainage layout that we have shown on the plans. Uh, the out, the ultimate outlet location, so where the water ends up does, is not, we're not proposing it to change. So, um, in that, I'll call it the fairgrounds half of the project, um, once we get to the raised crosswalk, there is a crosspipe. In the existing condition right now that outlets and drains, um. Into a slightly wooded area, um, and the intent would be that. That is what happens when, when the project is completed as well, um, so, and from that point on. Right now, in the existing condition, drainage then continues in that ditch on the west side and on the east side, it cheap flows off the road. Uh, the intent would be that, but everything makes its way to either Main Street or off the road, the intent would be that. The intent would be that, that same thing is gonna happen when we're done. So where things end up, uh, where things end up does not really change, uh, it's just how it gets there. As far as the areas where we're not proposing sidewalk or, or work as part of the project, like Eric said, well, we can take a look at that, but. We won't be making it worse, but we'll look at ways that we could make it better. And we'll talk about that with the town once we, once we kind of start looking at that stuff. Hope that answers, answers their question.
They still have concerns, but, um, uh, there's, there, there will not be additional sheet flow onto the east side of the road as a result of this project.
Yes, yep, yep.
Hi, I'm Carol Doran Voss, I'm right around the corner from Church Road on Main Street. Um, two questions, first of all, I know on Main Street, if I'm not wrong, I think the curbing is granite. But you said, I think it's concrete on Church Road?
Based on what I've seen, I think it's bituminous, so it's.
It is bituminous.
It is, uh, like a asphalt tar.
Okay, so it's similar?
Type interior, so. On Main Street where we're doing any work for ADA landings, crosswalks, things like that. The curbing will be put back in the same type, so it will be bituminous, uh, when the project is done. Right now, along Church Road, we are going with cut the concrete curb. So there is a change in curb, but it's along Main Street, it stays what it is on Main Street and then on Church Road is the concrete.
Okay, except still has been there for a number of years now and has stood up really good. Is the concrete equally as far as the longevity of it and all that quality of it?
Yes, so I know historically the winter salt and sand, um, and concrete, they're not favorable in the same sentence. But with new admixes and things like that, the concrete has a much more durable. It's much more durable and it lasts a lot longer. And there's specific things that are, that are incorporated for the main north, you know, area where there is salt and things like that, so.
Wonderful, um.
Eric, could you put the plan back up so we can see what it is when people are asking about stuff?
Yes, um, but we wanna, um, balance that with the need to have, uh, some, some faces here. So I'll, I can bring it up for, uh, things that are, um, I think substantive, um, I'd like to do that. But Travis, just let me know when you want it up and I'll bring it up.
Yeah, yep.
Um, the second question was, is, I think we talked at the last meeting, um, with the raised speed bumps. Is, um, like taking its toll on plow trucks and all that. And I know in the winter, well, when somebody goes over it at a higher speed, it can be very dangerous. And I imagine when there's snow and ice, that could be even compounded. We talked about the possibility of removable speed bumps, have we delved into that at all? Cause this is gonna be a fairly seasonal project. Um, in the winter, there'll still be some hikers at the fairgrounds, but they probably would be walking from nearby or driving. So I think the need for the speed bumps may be lower in the summer, I don't know, just bringing that up, I know. Okay, but I know we were talking about the removable ones and I imagine maybe, um, school buses too might take its toll, just putting that out there, that was part of the conversation.
So right now, uh, what we're proposing are permanent. They're made out of, of pavement, uh, they're cat, they're poured down and, and rolled in, and so they are permanent features. Um, as far as, as wear and tear on plowing equipment, um, I can't speak to the exact. Uh, side of that, but I will say that for vehicles, school buses, things like that, if you hit it in the appropriate, if you hit the speed table at an appropriate speed. There should not be, you know, everything in your car should not fly into the air and, and, and send you out of control. If you're, if they're driven appropriately, um, and there will be signage indicating the, the, the right speeds to be used, I believe it's 15 miles an hour. They ride fairly smooth, uh, so, and I have recent experience, uh, in this, in the city of Auburn. Uh, installing and through a construction project, installing these, these raised. I did two raised crosswalks, so they weren't speed tables, but they are identical construction. And I have heard no negative feedback from the city of Auburn, so they do their own plowing, uh, from their plow drivers regarding the, the speed tables. So they said that things are working great. They also had a few areas of on-street parking and curb bump outs and things like that, that were done as part of the project and, and those as well. Like I said, as long as they're appropriately handled, there shouldn't be any major issues.
Okay, and if they're going the speed limit, it's just 25 and that's 15, that's not a big discrepancy, so I see what you're saying. Is the, um, raised crosswalk fairly wide, like if two or three people were walking abreast, is it wide enough for that?
Yeah, so Eric, scroll over to the crosswalk for us, speak to that. So I think last, in our last meeting, we may have talked about, uh, what the construction of those tables look like. And I think I may have misspoke at some of the dimensions of them. So, so this is, this is our raised crosswalk. Right now, our sidewalks coming to and leaving this crosswalk are five and a half feet wide. As it's currently shown, these piano key style bars is the actual straw, crosswalk striping, those are shown six feet wide. So the crosswalk itself is six feet wide, however, this top area, so this line right there. And there is a line right there, that's the top part of the table, that area is 10 feet wide. And then these two side areas where you see these little arrows, those are striped, those will be painted on as well. Those are the six-foot ramps that lead up the, the raised crosswalk. So you have a six-foot ramp, a 10-foot flat table with a six-foot striped crosswalk, but I mean, you could walk presumably 10 feet wide, um, if, if you wanted to. And, and then a six-foot ramp down.
Excellent, thank you.
So there was one more question in the chat, um, while people are getting ready to jump up. It was a question about signage and minimizing signage and I just took the, the liberty of answering and saying. Some work is required for safety, like what you have to have for the sidewalks, um, but we'll do it whatever we can to minimize the amount of signage, uh, because I. I think that it's valuable, but if it's overdone, it becomes less valuable, so it's to everybody's benefit, keep that to a minimum, is that?
Yes, we, we agree 100%, if you overload the signs, they tend to lose their, their efficacy. But there are certain signs that are required as you approach things like the, the raised crosswalk and the speed tables and things like that. So we'll be proposing those signs, um, but we do not intend to, to go overkill with signs and put, you know, to line the road with a wall of signs, that's not what we want to do as part of the project.
My name is Tim Sniffin, I'm, uh, below, uh, the, the project downstream. And I have a question about water and you may not have decided, it's, I could hear your comments and, but. We're wondering where the water is gonna go on the underground pipe when it reaches Main Street.
That's a great question, so.
Where is it gonna go then?
It is gonna go where it goes now.
Which is what?
After it gets to Main Street, I can, I'll be honest with you, I don't know exactly where it goes. Once it's onto Main Street, cause we have limited information with, with our survey and what we have for information that we got from, um, the department and things like that. But the intent of, of our drainage system is once we get to Main Street. It jumps into that Main Street system and it goes where it goes now, I believe, and I, and I may be mistaken. But, so this is our Main Street intersection and you can see there's a gray line right here.
I do.
I believe that system comes down and this is an existing catch basin that continues to drain down Main Street.
Down to the dip, to the east of the post office.
Yes, that, it is downhill, as you go, as you go down on this, this picture here. It goes down a hill and then there is a dip there, yeah.
So it dumps into, uh, the stream down there.
Yes, so, so the intent would be that, that, that will be maintained in the proposed condition.
Okay, then I do have a concern.
Okay.
We're being, uh, we're having a real situation on Two Set Point Road. I, I do have, uh, a, a, a pass out if anybody was interested, I only have 15, but I'd be glad. I'd certainly like to get it to the planning board and to the select board and, and to you. We're having washout after washout. We are pretty sure that they have started more frequently since the existing sidewalk was built. We're not against sidewalks, but we're having huge damage to the, our road. It's a, it's a loop road, it crosses that little stream twice. And sometimes we wash out both culverts. We've increased the size of our culverts, we've added another culvert on top of the old one. And as Bill Drake said, December 18th this year was a, was a huge disaster. We both, both our roads, both culverts washed over. And I'd like to give you pictures. I'd like to just say, we, we feel like there is a correlation between sidewalks and our washouts. And if your new sidewalk is gonna tie in with the existing sidewalk and come down to that little stream, holy smokes. That's gonna be a bigger deal for us than we've ever faced before. I, I, I don't know, I'm not, I, I just want, wish you would build this into your thoughts. If it could turn and go west and end up in Mill Stream. That stream is big enough to handle it and it doesn't have any roads crossing it below, below Main Street, I don't think. But, um, but I don't know what you can do. But I do know that, um, this is a major concern for the lake, for Marana Cook Lake. And I know that Cabessy Water Shed, yeah, lists it as an area of major concern. And if what we're planning here, and I believe in sidewalks. You know, adds a huge dumpage to our, uh, stream, we're gonna have, uh, uh, you know, washout of. Well, we've got plans for bigger culverts, that's expensive. So we're, we're, I don't know, I just want you to build this into your thoughts, please.
Yeah, so.
Anybody wanna?
My, my, the input I can offer to you on, on this is.
You don't need to give me answers now.
I'll just, I can speak to a little bit of it, I can't speak to the whole thing, um, but I'll speak to what I can. The, the amount of water that is currently entering the Main Street drainage system. Is not going to substantially change, it'll, it, it's intended to be the same. The drainage area that goes to that point with what we're proposing is going to be the same. So ultimately, what water is making it there in the current condition is the same water that would be making it there when the project is, is done. So that's, that's, that's what I can offer for, for information, like I said, our intent of the project is to maintain the existing drainage outlets. But I certainly recognize your concern and that is a valid concern, if you, I think you were just about to come up and, and maybe give me a piece of paper.
Sure, I'm glad to give you paper.
I can, I can take them.
Thanks, yeah. I appreciate that, and I, I will say that, um, I'm not talking to the microphone, but I have been working with Jean, Jean Dupree, no, what's, uh, Jean?
Jean Dupuy.
Jean Dupuy.
His picture is in here.
To talk about some of those drainage issues on Two Set Point. And, and, um, we have really come to the conclusion that we have, there's a lot of water coming that we didn't have before. We never had storms like December 8th, or December 18th. Um, and so there's everybody in town, and I've seen it as road commissioner. The town itself has had to spend $60,000 a year over the past two years for unplanned road washouts. The environmental changes that are happening, the amount of water, our existing systems as a town, we're not designed to handle, uh, what we're dealing with now. So it doesn't surprise me that we're seeing more water and more damage to a lot of camp roads, we're seeing it to the town roads as well. Uh, and many of you, if you have homes, um, that are even in the least bit, uh, affected by, by water, surface drainage. I know my basement, I had to have two salt pumps running twice this year, just to keep water from flowing, uh, up into my furnace. I've never had to do that before, so, um, I'm, I'm not trying to diminish the, the, the issue, because there's a real issue with, with what we have going on with water. But I, I will say that I don't believe that it gets connected to, uh, the sidewalk or that construction, it's, it's in my view primarily related to climate change. But, um, I can certainly see the pain and suffering and cost, uh, that's, that, that's putting on, on you folks down there in Two Set, so.
One of the issues is that the same amount of water may be flowing or, um, but it's coming faster. When a pipe is carrying it underground and dumping it right straight into the stream, it's coming faster than it used to. And it's coming faster since the new sidewalk was, since the existing sidewalk was built. I think we're sure of that. And so it's, it's an issue for us and I'm, just thank you for letting me raise it.
Yep, nope, thank you, thank you, we appreciate your, your comment and concern.
Catherine Woodson, 1601 Main Street, which is up in Kents Hill. Can we put the map back up, Eric?
Yes, absolutely.
So I have a question about the red band that goes along where the stone wall is up by the fairground. What is that?
Yes, I can't answer that question. That is, uh, so you can see right along here, there is a C L L built into that line, that's a clearing limit line. So that is the limits of clearing that would be needed to, to construct what we have here. So that line is pretty much just any trees or limbs in that area would need to be cut to build the sidewalk and grade things appropriately.
And that's the same thing for the little trapezoidal part to the right?
Yes, that area is proposed to be cleared as well, yeah.
Okay, and then I think we had talked about this at the last meeting and you alluded to it tonight, there's a possibility. Of possibly dealing with Edward Perry's property on, and moving the sidewalk down to a different location?
Possibly something like that.
And would that still require the stone wall to be removed to have the parking?
So. I can't say for sure. The trees would still need to be removed to build the sidewalk, so the clearing limit would likely come further down. So whatever grading we, we, we need here to build our sidewalk, that clearing limit is typically five feet, five to 10 feet beyond that. That grading limit, um, and that's just so that way the contractor can be in there and work. I can't say it would and I can't say it wouldn't without digging into it, but there's a possibility the wall could stay. If the sidewalk were to come down below, but that would require, that would be a much greater impact to the property and, and like. I think Eric talked about, we would wanna coordinate that, uh, prior to, prior to proposing that.
That stone wall is really rather buried currently with vegetation and trees growing through it. I understand the reason to keep it. But I just thought I'd mention that, um, and then I have another question down at the corner. If we can slide to there, please. So you're showing the intersection in the four crosswalks, is anything being done in that area or are you just showing that because it's? The part that comes on to this project?
So the work you see on this corner, or really the work you see on these three corners here. That work is, is intended to bring the existing crosswalk landing areas up to ADA standards. So that is a requirement, uh, as part of doing ADA improvements of any project. When you, when you make, when you impact one side of a crosswalk, that in turn. Means you fix the other side and that very quickly dominoes to, if you touch one, you touch them all. So, um, these, we see this on projects where you might be going through and just milling and overlaying a road and it's like, okay, well, you do this one, this one, this one, and then it goes down the road there. So it, it oftentimes ends up being if you touch one, you touch the ball, so that is what the plan in this area would be. Is that because we were impacting these two sidewalks, we in turn got all four as part of the work.
And so is there any change to those sidewalks?
So.
From what's currently here?
From what's currently there. More than likely, no major change, so it would generally look like what it looks like now. But it would be built to meet the current ADA standards. Um, so, so slopes of the sidewalk area of, um, the landings, so right in this area, you can see there's a little hatched shape that's detectable warning field. So the little dimpled plates in the ground, those, those would be installed if they're not there, well. If they are there, they're gonna get removed and, and new ones installed. But that's to fix the slopes and things like that, cross slope for, um. The sidewalk and, and landing areas, um, to make everything accessible.
And you mentioned earlier the little yellow bands, is that something new, like, don't remember what you said those were?
Yes, so there's a little yellow bit, this one right here?
Yep.
Okay, so that is just what we call saw cut, that's an area where we would have to cut the pavement in the road. Um, and essentially just pave a small strip to build the new, to help build the new sidewalk. So because the curb has to be replaced and, and you know, the sidewalk regraded and things like that, we just, it ends up coming out into the road. So we can get appropriate tip-down lengths and, and things like that to meet ADA grades. So we can get appropriate tip down lengths and, and things like that to meet ADA grades.
And I'm just imagining that doing all of this work is part of what has added to the cost of the project?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
There was another comment in the chat about um, truck traffic on Church Road, uh, long trailers, tractor trailers. Um, and a question about a, a weight limit uh, for Church Road. Um, I'll say I don't believe that's something that we, we would be looking at, um, but I certainly understand um, the, the issue with having big trucks. Dump trucks, trailer trucks, uh, running on Church Road. Um, and that is one of the reasons why we've been looking at this sidewalk is because we have seen a lot of that traffic. Um, and they take up a lot of the roadway and it does cut down on, on lane width for oncoming vehicles and for others using the roadway, so. Um, it's a concern, but weight limits typically aren't something that uh, would be part of, of a sidewalk project. Um, and, and honestly, uh, the only time the town of Reed Field typically uh, limits weight is during uh, spring thaw, which. Um, just for the record, weight limits are posted uh, for when the ground is not solidly frozen, not a problem this week, okay?
Okay, sure, uh, I'm Rick Wilson, I live at one one two four Main Street, around the corner, so I'm really not involved in the scope of the project. Um, I'm wearing two hats, one is a private citizen to say I, I appreciate. Um, you listening to all the concerns, I've, I've come to these meetings since the beginning and it seems like each time we come, we have a new reiteration based on a lot of. Uh, listening, which is, which is good. Uh, my other hat I wear is I'm the president of the Water Association, so I'm glad you, you, you're understanding, you know, about the, the water main. And I just want to make sure when we get to the point of actually getting contractors for this, that they are aware that that water main is underneath this whole project. And, you know, if issues arise, that they, you know, ask questions about it, contact Winterfut utilities who manage it for us and. Just don't want any surprises once the construction starts.
Yeah, absolutely, so, so we did get that information uh, collected, I think the, the water district uh, went out and, and marked it all out for us. Uh, survey crews went out and picked it up, we had a small gap in it that we're going to act, we're going to, we'll connect the dots and label it as approximate, but we know where it is. Um, it's shown.
There's no gap in the water, we get the water.
Yes, that's correct, yes, there is no gap in the water. Uh, so, so yeah, we have it shown in the plans. Um, we also, as part of the final design process, so as we approach construction, we'll be developing what's called the one oh four spec. Um, it's a utility specification that gets into all that stuff, and through that process, we will be calling uh, attention to the water main. Uh, we'll be calling attention to who needs to be contacted for it, uh, and things like that. So that, so all of that, it definitely will not be overlooked, um, that'll all be included in our specification and it, it's shown in the plans.
Perfect.
Um, and as we develop our subsurface design of our drainage system, that whole picture will become very clear. You know, where we cross the water main, where we're near it, adjacent to it, things like that. Uh, all of those things will start to become much more clear as we determine our elevations of our drainage system.
Great, thanks, appreciate it.
Sorry, but a follow-up to Rick's question, so are we leaving the water main exactly where it is, we're not moving it?
That is correct.
And what is it going to be underneath, or what's going to be above it?
Uh, that depends on where you are. So sometimes it's under the road and curb area. Um, and I think in the later portion of the project, it actually starts to fade off of the road a little bit and get under the, the grass swale area. Um, so in those areas, it would be under either, so, so short answer, either under an esplanade or parking area or under, near the curb line.
So what does this do to us in terms of future maintenance if we have to dig up the water main? Because is it underneath any of the roadway now?
It's right on the, from what we have for information, it's right on the edge. So there are some areas where it's just inside, a little bit more inside, and then other areas where it's under the gravel shoulder of the road. So it really, it kind of shifts as you go down the road, uh, from what we have for information.
So currently, if we had an issue, would we be having to cut into Church Road to repair it? So now, by, by moving all of this out, wh- what does that do to us in the future if we need to repair that water main? Are we digging up the sidewalk?
Yeah, so if you did have an issue, you would have to dig up the sidewalk and anything that's on top of it would have to. To come up as well, so if there was a curb or, you know, parking area, um, it may be a grass esplanade area, like I said, it just kind of depends on where you are. But if there was an issue, you would have to, to pull that stuff up.
And so then Eric, the question to you would be, who's responsible for that at that point?
Probably would be the town, yeah.
Okay, so the, the Water Association is responsible for the water main, not the town, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
But if they have to go through town-owned structure on top of their water main, then the town has to re- replace that?
Yes, and we would um, of course, be trying to figure out how best to do that with the least impact. But um, yeah, no, it's a, it's a tricky relationship, uh, just like any utility, uh, there are um, shared rights. Um, and uh, and yeah, the town would, if we had to, if we got a break, we would have to replace the section.
Thank you.
Done? Hesitate to ask this question about how old is the water? Late eighties, early nineties, about forty, not eighteen.
Well, you laugh, but it's not.
I lived in my house two years ago, and that's where I came from, so. It's fairly new in terms of water.
Yeah.
Dave Linton, Oak Kent Hill Road. Um, one's a question, one's a comment. Uh, the question, uh, originally you said the travel lanes there now are twenty-five feet of the pavement, so roughly twelve and a half feet from centerline.
The total road width is about twenty-five, that includes some of the gravel shoulder area, so paved width varies between eleven and twelve.
Okay, what will the travel lane widths be after the project?
So the proposed width of the travel lane, so I believe we are proposing a stripe. Um, a fog line on the sidewalk side of the road. Um, and you, it's tough to see because it's buried between this underdrain and the, the dashed saw cut line, but there is a solid line in there. That line would be placed at eleven feet.
Oh, so, okay, so eleven feet each side of travel, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, because that would be an issue if you, I know, at one point you talked about uh, with the side, the parking spaces on each side having an eight foot lane width and. The legal width in Maine is eight foot six, and that might be a problem, especially with construction companies out that road.
Yeah, so, so the, the parking stall itself is eight feet wide, um, but the travel lane, uh, main DOT's minimum that we would propose is actually ten feet too.
Okay.
So the, I know it varies from, you know, whether it's a local road or a state road, but where this project is. Partially funded through the, the federal and, and state funding sources, we would follow the department's guidelines, so yeah.
The other comment would be, and I explained this at the last meeting, about the trees, being in the world of trees for the last thirty-five years. Um, a lot of those, where you say grade around the existing tree. Yeah, if you, if you dig or fill around the base of those trees, greatly diminishes. The life expectancy and the survival rate of those trees, just so everybody is aware of that, and it's not going to happen overnight, it's going to take two or three years. So I don't, I don't know, you know, how, how deep it's being cut, as a rule. If you've got a tree that's got a thirty-foot wide canopy, ultimately its roots extend the same width as the canopy you see above ground. So you will be disturbing roots and filling around the base of a tree, it typically will kill it. So just something for people to be aware of that, for the future after the project.
Yeah, yep, so that's partially, partially why in some of those areas, I know some of these are in the middle and, and those are hopefully areas where. And, and we'll take a look at it in, in more detail as we dig into the, the cross-sectional view of the road and how deep everything is. Um, but like for areas like this, where they were so close to the edge of the line, we were confident that the contractor can just, without grading, they'll grade around it. But they, they may not need to grade up against the tree. Um, so, we, I agree with you a hundred percent, I know, I know, you know, the canopies extend and, and little things can impact a tree.
Um, even the water flow will, will have some effect on some trees, I mean, just changing the direction of water.
One other item that will, will likely make its way onto the plans, um, as we push toward uh, the PIC submittal or that right-of-way. Process submittal, um, is notes that pertain to protecting trees, so that is, we will be calling more attention, I can't. You know, guarantee that, um, you know, that, that no.
They had any of my trees, but I just wanted people to be aware.
Yeah, nope, oh, thank you, I appreciate your concern, that's, it's good information, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Joel Parker, thirty-nine Church Road. I was just going to, we hit it on it a little bit, just a little bit earlier, but the maintenance uh, going on with the sidewalk here, I know it's not a very long uh, linear distance for it, but. Uh, it seems like what we were talking about earlier is a Reed Field, the uh, Church Road isn't very wide, so if, I know we've had a very open winter so far this year, but. In the previous winters, when it's, I had a lot of snowfall, I'm just thinking, just picturing in my head of like the snow being uh, a lot deeper and thicker on there and a plow truck going by and pushing that snow up into the. Uh, sidewalk and those parking spaces, and then I'm trying to think of like, where is that snow going to go to next, uh, when we have a, a, you know, bad winter when, with more snow cover? And I was thinking to myself, it's like, am I going to get built up right on the edge on the uh, personal yards that are lined each side of the sidewalk or on the, you know, the. Whatever side sidewalk's on, or is it, that the thought process right now?
Uh, as far as I know, I can't speak to the exact nature, but um, Eric, is that?
Yeah, so I mean, essentially the, the current road edge, um, the, the, the material is pushed uh, probably two to three feet off of the road edge. Um, and uh, with the sidewalk, we actually don't need to push it quite so far off the edge of the asphalt. Um, so I'd say that where we have a sidewalk without parking, um, the, the material might move five feet further in than it is currently. Um, I'd say areas where we have a bump, you know, an in where we have on-street parking, uh, you might, you might see something closer to, uh, you know, ten feet further. Uh, in from the current uh, edge of the, uh, edge of the bank.
Okay, yeah, because I was just trying to compare it in my head of what the Main Street uh, sidewalk was like, because it's obviously a wider road on seventeen and. Has like the breakdown where the fog, you know, laying there before the sidewalk, so it's like, still more room, but, no, thank you.
I will uh, mention, because this question came up last time, something similar, we did, uh, I did talk to the maintenance staff um, about um, end of the plow contractor, about how that might be handled. Um, and really, we were doing similar work already on Route seventeen, uh, we are dealing with some very tight quarters there. Um, and uh, fortunately, Church Road, we don't have anything that's quite as close uh, as on Main Street. Uh, but um, it's certainly in our mind, uh, and something that we've been, um, you know, uh, looking at to make sure we can handle it. Uh, I believe between the, the contractor, um, doing the plow work, uh, and the town, uh, doing the, the incremental um, uh, sidewalk cleanup. Uh, we'll be able to take care of that and, and, and not have any adverse impacts on, on property owners. Um, and if we do, we'll have to figure it out, but I, um, I think that we've done well with that, uh, dealing with uh, the, the store, the, um, the Emporium when it was open. Um, and uh, and dealing with just the overall situation on Main Street, uh, so I'll, I'll stop there.
Jim Tukey, eighty-one oh Fairgrounds Road, and I'm on the board for the meeting house, uh, two simple questions. One is, what are the dimensions of an individual parking spot?
Uh, yeah, so the, the dimensions of the individual spots change a little bit. Um, if you're on the end of a parking run, it's typically twenty feet long by eight feet wide. Um, if you're in the middle of a run of parking and not on the end, it would be twenty-two and a half feet long by eight feet wide.
So where, where they're in a run, they're twenty feet and striped?
Yes, yeah, so, uh, I can point them out real quick here, so this is, uh, can you go to the right a little bit more? Okay, that's good, right there, so this stall right here, so from that point to that first stripe, twenty feet.
Yeah.
And then in the middle here, it would be about twenty-two and a half feet.
Oh.
Twenty-two and a half.
Twenty-two and a half, okay, thank you. Um, and are there any utility pole relocations in the project?
So right now, we don't have any plan. Um, that is part of some of the reasons behind some of the bump outs and, and curb extensions that you see here, so for this one. This might have been one that I mentioned earlier, but the gray utility pole is tough to see on the gray sidewalk, so I apologize for that. But there is a utility pole right there, and in that location, we put in this curb extension or bump out, and we actually made the sidewalk. A little bit wider in front of the utility pole to avoid having to relocate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have a small list, um, I'm at fourteen Church Road, so right next to the meeting house. Um, wanna think, maybe, I don't know.
Could you introduce yourself, Rosalie?
Oh, Rosalie Kimball, fourteen Church Road, sorry. Um, so yeah, if you put mine up, um, and a lot of this stuff is just pertaining to mine, but then I have another uh, question too about the. Fairground stone wall, um, so you're.
Where are we?
Down, more toward Main Street. Oh, no, the other way, sorry. There you go, yeah, um, so you're removing a tree there, which is a big stump, which has a wire attached to it and a light, so I just didn't, it, that wasn't listed.
This one right here?
Yeah, that's got a light, it's like basically a light post, which is why it's still there. Um, it's got a wire and a light on it, um, and I just didn't know if you were aware of that.
Okay, well, we are now, so we'll make sure we, we.
Yeah, and it doesn't mean I need to keep it, but I probably would like that light somewhere, and you know, there's electrical wire running to it from somewhere underground. You know, I'm not sure where that runs, I wasn't the person who ran it. Um, and then, um, let's see. Oh, and you had listed that you're going to remove part of the stone wall that's right by that tree, and so I'm just wondering. You know, I'd like to have those rocks, can I, should I just go and remove it myself and then, and then I could rebuild it afterwards, or? You know, it's a nice little stone wall.
Yeah, yeah, so you're saying right here, right?
Right there, there's a, just a little section of stone wall that's on my property line.
Yeah, so what, what we can do is, because. Yeah, because we're impacting it, we can put a note that those rocks are, can be returned to you.
Okay.
And then.
Yeah, if I can jump in, it's on your property, that wall is yours, um, so you have a right to it.
Yeah.
And through the right-of-way process, though, the compensation for this project impact.
Okay.
So you certainly through that process can, uh, should be compensated for the damages to that wall, but stones themselves, like.
Okay.
Yeah.
Whether you move it now or until the project gets properly aligned, you might want to put it in the right way, but.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, okay, um, and then, and so I guess same question with the light, the tree being my light post, is that, um. Would I be compensated for that also? Yeah, okay.
That's a private light.
Yeah, okay, um, and I do have a little dogwood tree that I think you're probably consider it to be a weed, it's not listed on there, and I'm assuming. It's a really nice little dogwood tree, um, but I'm, I'll, I can emotionally prepare myself if that needs to go away also.
Do you know whereabouts it is?
It's, it's, um.
There?
Yep, about there, yeah.
Um, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah, cute little tree.
It's so, so it's very close to the sidewalk?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, yeah, so I can understand why it needs to go away, but it's a, it's a nice little tree, yes, I really, I really like it.
It would be part of that right-of-way process, right?
It would, yes, yep.
So we can negotiate that.
I mean, it's probably.
And also appears to be on your property.
It's not a big tree.
Yes.
It's also a very good, very funny, you know, remove and reset. Smaller size.
Okay, I have, I don't have much yard area, so, but yeah, we could look at that. Um, let's see, I had kind of the same concern that Bob Marvin, he did it, but as far as that, you're going to put a light on the pole that's right there in my yard also. Um, and the, in the attic of my house is the master bedroom right there. And so just, you know, as long as that light is actually pointed straight at the ground, then that's okay.
Yep.
But otherwise, it's probably like pretty close to bedroom level. Yeah, great. Um, uh, let's see, okay, stone wall, dogwood wire, drainage, yeah, so, so. Yeah, so so there were the concern about the the flow through the drainage pipe that, you know, is now gonna be under instead of the ditch. You know, I don't know how quite quite how that works as far as engineering goes, because you're gonna be. You know, obviously, there's some water that gets just absorbed into the ground right now. Is there gonna be less water that gets absorbed straight into the ground? You know, they're talking about because there's a pipe, it's gonna be moving faster. Um.
Yeah, so so as part of that closed system, once the water gets into the pipe, it's it's in the pipe. Um, so it it doesn't.
So it's not like a perforated.
Right, so it's perforated on top. So the under, it's called under drain is what we would use. Um and and for for. This type of system, that under drain um is perforated only on the top side of the pipe and the bottom side of the pipe is solid. So once the water gets into through the perforations on the top, it doesn't, it won't have the opportunity to go out the bottom.
So it does sound like it will move faster.
It will move faster.
Yeah.
So compared to a compared to a ditch surface or or an open drainage system, yeah, the water does move faster.
And right now, that corner floods, so the cor- corner down by Main Street floods and. So I'm assuming that that will be ameliorated somehow. Um. And my perimeter drain. Yeah, that weird, that corner is just really weird the way it is now.
Yeah, it collects a lot of stuff.
It collects a lot of stuff, water, and it's always clogged, and it's a big mess, and the sidewalks are weird, and it's it's just a strange, strange thing. Um. And um. My perimeter drain from my property actually crosses under my driveway. And comes out in front of the old Grange building. And so that might be something I wanna make sure that you guys know where that is.
Yeah, Eric, could you slide over just to, yeah, right there?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying it comes out here?
No, I'm the um, my driveway is on the left.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry. So this is, this is the Grange building, correct?
Yeah, that's the Grange. So my perimeter drain goes under my driveway and comes out in front of their building.
Okay.
So that's just something to be aware of.
Okay, so.
And you can see the end of it and. Near that culvert that comes out in front of their building.
Eric, could you scroll down just a touch?
Oh, yeah. Down this way.
Existing drainage, so that's my drainage that they're talking about.
If it is in this, in that area, I I think it may be, but what we'll do is we'll take a look at what we have for information. Um but if it's in that area, even if there were multiple in that area, um. Hopefully, we have them all caught. But like I said, we'll take a better look at it um now that we know you have, you have one there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and I'm assuming that the existing width of the driveway will be will be maintained as. As it is, cuz my driveway is basically like two vehicles wide and that's, it kinda needs to be a lot wide, yeah.
Yeah, so. Yes, the intent is not to make anybody's driveway. That was one thing that we I had mentioned earlier. We looked at the use and the sizes of driveways. We don't wanna make people's driveways tight and narrow.
Yeah.
Um and we we also don't wanna make them very wide and large. Um, so the intent, the intent of what we're doing is generally to match what. What's there now? Um, I think this is your driveway, correct?
Nope.
I did it again, didn't I? It's this side, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, you could see there's a dashed gray line in there.
Yeah.
Um, so really, right in this area, we're actually making it a little bit bigger. But at the road, the the width of the driveway is.
Bigger is okay, yeah.
It's gonna be about the same, yeah.
Yeah, cuz I share it with the with the Grange. We share the driveway there.
Gotcha, okay. Yep.
Um, okay, and then my only other question was about. Um, just kind of going back up by the fairgrounds and people are concerned about the stone wall and everything there. And I'm just wondering if they've considered, like, the sidewalk is just for people, not where people aren't cars. So did the people have to? Is the the driveway, I mean, is the crosswalk right near the existing driveway? Where's the existing driveway into the parking lot?
For the fairgrounds?
Yeah.
It is just off to this, it's right behind um Oliver.
Okay, so is there a reason why the crosswalk couldn't just turn off sooner and, you know, go right through that wall and not disturb all of the rest of the? Trees and wall up there? Just turn sooner?
So you're saying come down this way?
Um.
Is that what you're?
Or or even make a more of a right angle turn?
Oh, oh, um. That is something that we looked at as we were laying this out. Uh, one thing we want to try to avoid was pedestrians going right into the driveway where vehicles are turning. And are turning out.
Right.
Um, so that's part of the motivation for us to to bring it in here. Also, there are trails in this area where where there appears to be trails in the area. Um gravel paths that paths that kind of connect up in near that area of the parking lot. Um, so we we just wanted to provide a a. A connection that was a little more, you know, connected to the entire system. Um.
Yeah.
Look, Rosalie, were you saying to grade closer to the town's property line?
I think she meant coming across right here.
Further to the left, you know where the existing trail is that enters the parking lot, like closer.
Can we bring it down there?
Yeah. Yeah, right about where your arrow is now, like just turn in there and.
So is there a tra- if the trail comes through into this area here?
The trail comes into the side of the parking lot. And you don't have the parking lot, um, we can't really see it on there.
It's not that close to the property line, the trail.
Yeah, because I remember being out there, there was a big mound of dirt.
Yeah.
Right here.
That's where I'm talking about coming through.
Right about where the mound of dirt, okay, so is that dirt gone?
No, the trail on the backside of it. The dirt's still there, but obviously no cars are parking there right now, so wouldn't that be a nice place to?
Okay, okay, so the, so you're saying, okay, I think I just, it just clicked what you're saying. So you're, so you're saying maybe bring it in here.
Yes.
And then come across this way.
Yeah, or even go the, just connect it, and it doesn't even have to be a paved sidewalk at that point. It could be, you know, like the Marana Cook driveway, the. The the walkway that goes along the Marana Cook driveway. They have a sidewalk, but then in the woods is just a gravel pathway. Like, couldn't it at some point just turn into a nice gravel pathway? Cut straight through the rock wall and. You know, you're there, like I don't.
Little of the ADA characteristics if you do that.
Okay.
That may be part of it.
Yeah, okay.
If you get to the paved parking lot, well, it's paved with the fairground project. That gives you a continuous ADA well.
Okay, yeah.
But, I mean, turning it sooner, if we can't turn it on the other property, other property, we can possibly turn it sooner.
I mean, you could still, yeah, you could still pave it through there, but just turn it sooner and come in.
Yeah, so so we could look at that. Um. Ultimately, we would just wanna make sure that we're connecting to something.
Yeah.
That, you know, you know, we don't wanna propose it in a future uh location and then have it not connect to anything, but if the trail is in that area, it is something that we can talk with Eric about.
Yeah.
And look at, cuz I know you had men, Eric had mentioned earlier, you know, the alignment in this area. Was something that uh could be discussed with a property owner, so it, so it's definitely something we can look at um as we move forward. Don?
We also wanna think a bit about on street parking, you have the sidewalk adjacent to the on street parking, so that's just something that we should.
So, yeah, so if if we lost this section of of sidewalk. It may be something where. Some portion of, maybe some of or all of that parking also goes away, or we still have to provide some kind of access to to that parking. Um, so.
Okay.
But it's it's definitely something we can take a look at and 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 talk with Eric and the town about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Something else I'll throw up there regarding the wall, I get a street over the wall. It looks like a regular rock place, I'm sure there's value to it, but the contractor may be able to remove and reset that small further back as far as construction work too. I have to just note that a portion of that wall appears to be on the adjacent property. Sorry, some some things to to be aware.
It's more of the sun pilot box, kind of, yeah.
It would be pretty easy for the contractor to reset that back part of the tent, take the whole trees of me.
Yes, I like that idea.
Just move it down.
Franz Zambella, one oh six Church Road. I'm actually beyond the uh planned sidewalk uh by a few hundred feet. Uh, and I know we we're spending a lot of time dwelling on the west sidewalk, western side side sort of. Uh, we're gonna be looking at the sidewalk on the east side of Church Road. Or it hasn't been determined or that we're, that is going on the west side.
So. With the plan that we currently have shown, this is. Partially where we landed through the development of a few different options. Um, we did look at putting the sidewalk on the eastern side of the road. We actually developed. A couple plans that showed it either exclusively on the eastern side of the road, exclusively on the western side of the road. Uh, and then also the hybrid option with with both sides of the road at certain, yeah, different locations. Um, ultimately, we did decide to proceed with this option where um through the first half of their. It's a little more than half, but through the first, we'll say, two thirds of the project, uh the sidewalk is on the western side of the road, and that was. Mainly because on the eastern side of the road, there are a lot more large, mature trees that are very close to the road. So through putting in the sidewalk, a lot of those trees, if not the majority of them, were gonna be impacted by just the construction of the sidewalk alone. Not even counting the grading that would be required. Uh. Also, on the eastern side of the road, we had a lot more houses that were a little closer to the road. Um, and the grades in those areas were a little bit more challenging because of the way that the the ground slopes and the existing condition. Uh, the western side of the road is a little bit higher compared to the eastern side of the road, so it was a little bit easier for us to make up the grades coming off the back of our sidewalk.
So at this point, we're not considering the sidewalk on the east side?
Right, at this point, where we have. We've decided to move forward with the sidewalk mostly on the west side, but there is that small portion on the east side as you get toward um the fairground side of the project.
Well, which which proposal has the least impact on the environment?
I don't have an answer to that question specifically. Um, I can. Give an educated guess to property impacts. We saw a little bit less impacts with. The majority of the sidewalk being on the western side of the road just because of the way the grading was. Um, but as far as the environment goes, I can't speak to that specifically.
And cost wise. How does the west side cost compare if it were put on the east side?
Cost wise, so we didn't get into detailed costs uh when we were developing the two different design options. We did a very high level cost. Uh, and the costs were very similar. What we did see for increased cost came from drainage structures that were gonna be needed to drain. As I mentioned, the grades on the back of the sidewalk on the eastern side, we needed more structures, we needed more catch basins and more connecting pipes. Um, so the base of the drainage system, the under drain pipes and the roadway drainage didn't necessarily change all that much, but we need, did need more. On the back side of the sidewalk, closer to the property owner's area, um and more on private property to get the drains to not. Come off that sidewalk and and make its way into the system to be taken.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, questions. Don?
Travis, can I just add one comment on the cost?
Yes.
The comment made about ADA ramps down on Main Street, that was an additional cost. When the initial cost of this problem were identified, I don't believe there was any parking, on street parking. Right, so all the additional parking we put on here is added to the product cost.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Don.
And I just had one uh other water issue that came up. If you could put the map back up, Eric. When Rosalie's, um, you were talking about Rosalie's property in the Grange next door, when that was a school four or five years ago, they paid to connect to the water system. So I'm not sure you are aware of that. So there is a pipe that comes out of their building and ties into the system, so. Um, just wanna make sure you're looking at the most recent plans when you're, when you're trying to figure out who has.
Yeah.
You know, the water access.
Yeah, so I can't, I can't guarantee that all of those service lines are are shown on the plans. Um. But I will say that some of them are, and you can kind of see right there, there's a gray line. Um. With the colors and all the line work, it's it's hard to see that that actually connects, but that does connect into the water main. Um, there's also another one right here, so we do have some nervous, uh, some services noted on the plans. Um.
It's just that the that Grange building, that's been the only change since the existence of the association.
Yeah, so so and. As a as a backup to, if it's not shown on the plans, um, the contractor, again, in that one oh four spec. Will be flagged to all of those types of things and will be flagged to coordinate um with the association and and the utilities district and all. Dick Safe as well, obviously Dick Safe will be, will be heavily involved with the project and getting everything marked out, how it should be with the instructions going. So, thank you.
Dave Linton again, I forgot one thing. Uh, doing all the underground drains, I'm assuming periodically there must be sand and silt and. Other material that collects in those, and they must have to be serviced, cleaned out at some point. Is there a? I know you can't tell, every project's different, but how often do those typically need to be cleaned and what kind of cost are we looking at periodically to do that?
So. I. I would say typically they're cleaned, I can speak for bigger municipalities and cities, I think they're cleaned yearly. Um, I will say that the catch basins we proposed as part of the project will have a sump in them. So essentially, it'll be a two foot section of catch basin with no pipes that are below the pipes, so when water dumps in. Hopefully, it deposits some of that material, and there's storage in the catch basins to help. Um, to help provide a spot for that to go, so it's not needing to be cleaned out constantly, so there there can be some buffer, but as to the specific cost.
Probably anticipate a, an annual cost for.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know if the if the town has uh catch basin cleaning costs as it is right now or.
We don't. Uh, the sidewalk on on Main Street actually hasn't needed any. Um, uh, but um, uh. We have had to have areas cleaned out. Um, they do have vacuum trucks, there are a number of companies in the area.
Very.
Uh, Gusta Lewiston, um, that do that work. Uh, and and I think that they're, you know, fifty, a hundred bucks a piece of them like that, probably more now. Um, but uh, yeah, uh, we do have um contractors in the area that could do that work for us, and we would be needing the budget for that in addition to. Um, you know, any other extra maintenance costs that might come up with this project, which we'll have, you know, there's no question, this is gonna have an ongoing uh effect on our maintenance budget.
Eric, what was the number you just said? Did you say fifty to a hundred?
Yeah, I think per each for the catch basins to be cleaned.
And how many catch basins will we have?
Uh. I don't know.
That number is somewhat determined, not set in stone just yet. So once we finish this next round of drainage designs, things like that. Um, I can't say off the top of my head how many we have, I could probably count real quick. Um, but there, there are several on the project. Um. I, I won't commit to that, I won't commit.
Eric, did you say we have it or don't do that?
We haven't had to, no, we have, uh, we've had um culverts, driveway culverts that have been clogged that we've had to have cleared out. Um, for for a hundred bucks a piece or so, but um as far as having an organized uh catch basin cleaning for the church road side, or excuse me, for the um. The Main Street sidewalk, uh, that hasn't been necessary.
And there's common made clean on the annually, that's great if you could do it, but I would think that's a requirement. Main DOT has many of these basins across the state, and it goes into it every two years or every five years, they're probably doing that. Now, probably speaks to what we will meet.
I'll say Main Street's been at least ten, so um, doesn't mean it's right, put it that way.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or? All right, well, excellent. Thank you. No, I appreciate you guys coming. I appreciate you taking the time. Um. And obviously, the comments you guys provided and and the feedback you give is is invaluable to us, so we really appreciate all your time. Thank you. And if you did not sign in on the sign in sheet, please do not forget to do that. Um, yeah, so thank you, everybody.